All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have roll call, please? Sorry. Mr. Antoine?
Here.
Ms. Bonnick?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Dr. Demas?
Here.
Mrs. Ikors?
Here.
I am here, and Mr. Young is absent. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag's back there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Support. Moved and supported. Antoine and Connor. Are there any questions or concerns?
I think, Mrs. Bonnick, we have that closed session, so if we can do our traditional move-up of board discussion and public comment-
Sure.
-before Action G.
Yep.
Then we'll adjourn after the closed session with no other action.
Correct. So the agenda would go F, Board Discussion, Public Comment, then Closed Session, and then we'd come out for adjournment. Any other comments or changes for the agenda? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will turn it over to Dr. Robinson to introduce for the audit presentation.
So as an extension of the Finance Committee meeting that we had, Jessica's back. In fact, last year, I think you had a conflict, so we had someone else from your office.
Yep.
Good to have you back again in Romeo.
Thank you.
I'm sure you're spending a lot of time this time of year visiting several board meetings, so-
Mondays are very busy.
Yeah, we're happy to have you here to do the presentation of our audit results, so I'll turn it over.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. My name's Jessica Rolfe. I'm a principal with Yo and Yo. I am in charge of your audit, and I am here to go through the results for your June 30, 2024 fiscal year. The first slide I'm gonna hit on here, and you guys have lots of stuff in front of you. You have all the reports, but then I also kind of summarized everything on the top on a PowerPoint, just to kind of hit the high-level stuff. The first thing we're gonna talk about is the audit opinion. So this is what we're hired to do. We're supposed to give an opinion on your financial statements. We had an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance you can have, best opinion you can have. What it means is that the statements are prepared in accordance with the standards that they're supposed to be, and we feel they're free of any material misstatements. In years past, we've had another bullet on here talking about new standards. For the first time in a very long time, there wasn't a huge new standard to implement this year. So if you think back, we had leases, we had those spittas. Finally, we kind of had a year that was just normal. I'm gonna talk about the numbers a little bit. I'm gonna focus on the general fund as your main operational fund, but those are, your other major fund would be the 2021 Facility Bond Fund. And then the non-major column is made up of things like your Debt Service Fund, Food Service, Student Activity Fund, some of the other bond funds that are a little smaller. We'll talk about general fund. You'll see total assets this year were almost $29 million. That was an increase from last year of about 6.2. Biggest change was you'll see when we get to the fund balance, there was an increase there, as well as that due from other governments was up a little bit due to more state aid receivable at the end of the year. Liabilities for general fund, you'll see almost $12 million, up about $1.4 million from the year before, mostly due to some unearned revenue. Some of that state aid that came in hasn't been spent yet, so that's sitting in that unearned revenue bucket this year. Here's a breakdown of your fund balance. Again, focusing on the general fund, you'll see we're at about $17 million. That was an increase of about $4.7 million, which we'll see when we get to the next slide. It's broken up into different buckets there. Most of yours is unassigned. The committed portion is really what you've budgeted to use next year of your fund balance when you did your original budget for '24, '25. Talking about the revenues and expenses for the whole fiscal year. Revenues, we're at about $76.6 million, also an increase of about $2.6 million from last year. Mostly state aid, little bit of local revenue, like property taxes. Expenditures were also up about $1.1 million, not quite as much as those revenues. Change in fund balance is about $4.7 million, like I mentioned before. Your fund balance is a percentage of expenditures, which is something the state usually looks at, is about 24%. The state recommends 15% and above. Keep in mind, the reason that fund balance has been increasing the last few years is a lot of that one-time funding, so a lot of those ESER funds. All of that, some of it could be used for supplanting, so it's kind of built up that fund balance. But as those funds are going away, keep in mind, there's gonna be decisions to be made. You know, that funding's gone, what programs you're continuing. So keep in mind that just because that fund balance is high, a lot of it is because of that inflation, and it will come down over time as those funds are going away. Next up, we'll talk about the budget. I mentioned at the Finance Committee meeting, this was the closest budget I've had this year of all my schools, which really says a lot. There was a lot of uncertainty at the end of the year as to what state aid funding was coming in, you know, those federal expenditures, kind of figuring out what we're gonna spend and what we're not in that little bit of time between the budget and year-end. So it was definitely a really close budget, which really says a lot to your team. Here, we break down your revenues by category. You can see most of it's state. Another big chunk is local and federal. Comparing to last year, all were within 1% of last year, so no huge swings in those buckets. Same thing with expenditures. Obviously, the biggest percentage is always those salaries and benefits. You're right in line with where I see my other districts. You know, usually 80% to 85% is kind of where everybody falls for those, so you're right where you should be. Again, everything within 2% of last year, so consistent with those buckets. We also look at your revenues and expenses on a per-pupil basis, because typically, if we're getting revenue, we're spending it on something for instruction or programs or students. So you can see that trend is how the revenues go up, so do the expenses. You might notice that gap's a little bigger the last two years. And again, a lot of that has to do with some of that ESER funding, because we could supplant some expenses and that kind of spread that out a little bit. But again, as the years continue now, we're gonna see that start coming down and those numbers probably coming closer together again. Just an idea of your enrollment. You can see it was down this year about 99. The year before, it was up 112, so kind of up and down about 100 kind of through the last few years. Lowest time was during COVID, obviously, kind of that 2020, 2021 timeframe. I mentioned this earlier, but the fund balance is a percentage of expenditures. So you can see, I mentioned it was almost 24%. You can see how that trend has increased a little bit as those ESER funds have been coming in the last few years. Some of your bonds, I just thought we'd kind of talk about where some of them are at. You'll see your 2016 Series II bond is pretty much complete. We're kind of right in the middle of that 2021 bond, so you can see we're about 45% complete as of the end of the fiscal year. So that was mostly the main audit numbers. The other thing I'm gonna talk about is the single audit. So this is an audit we're required to do of your federal dollars. There's a formula and a calculation we go through to determine which programs we have to test each year. This year, we had to test the Education Stabilization Funds, which is the name for ESER. You can see your total expenditures were pretty consistent with the year before at about $5.8 million. ESER was about $2.7 million of that, so we tested almost 50% of your federal expenditures. Now, the important part is how did it go, right? So financial statement findings, we had none. So anything we went over in the numbers prior, everything looked good. We didn't make any significant entries, no big internal control issues, no findings related to those financial statements. Federal awards, so that's the single audit, the audit of all your federal dollars. Again, everything looked good. No findings, no noncompliance. We have a checklist of about 90 items we go through for that program. So it says a lot when everything looks good and there's no findings and you're doing what you should be. And then I just always like to mention if there's anything from prior year that we followed up on that, but you did not have any findings in prior year either. The last thing that comes in your packet that we're required to give you is the governance letter. So this talks about anything else that's in your statements that we think you should know about. We always let you know if there were any new standards that were being adopted. Like I mentioned earlier, there was no big standards this year like we've had in the past with those leases and spittas. Upcoming standards, there is one coming out next year regarding compensated absences. It basically takes more of an estimate into consideration for that number. It's a liability on your district-wide statements. It will not affect any of your fund-level statements, like your general fund or anything like that. So shouldn't be too hard to implement. It's pretty much just one number on those front statements. Then we get down to our recommendations. So these are not findings. These are not slaps on the wrist. These are things that we found that are, you know, areas of improvement, things we noticed. The first one is Food Service Fund Balance. So as every district, almost in the whole state, Food Service Fund Balance is too high, right? We've had free lunches. We've had a lot of money coming in for food service. Everybody's fund balance is a little too high. So MDE says we have to at least draw attention to it in our report as a comment. So that's why that's there. Keep doing what you're doing, trying to spend it down, submitting those plans to the state, and doing your best to bring it down. The last one here also has to do with food service. We just noted that the monthly meal claims for lunches and breakfast and all that stuff wasn't being submitted every month. It was kind of lagging a little bit, and then we'd do a few months. So we just wanted to make sure that that's being reconciled and submitted each month so that it's easy to reconcile, we can expect the cash flows consistently each month. So just to kind of tighten that up a little bit and do those requests every month. Other than that, the audit went great again this year. You have a great team, and I love working with them. They're always nice. We get through things quickly, and another good year to report. Any other questions for me?
I do not, but thank you very much. And of course, we'd like to thank Vicki and her whole team, because we know how much work goes into the audit and how much they have to provide for you. So appreciate all the work that's done from the business office as well.
I'd like to echo that as well. I know what it is like to have auditors in an admin building. I work in an admin building myself, and I know that you have to be at the auditor's beck and call when they want something, and it stops your daily operations. So I can really, you know, I know what the offices go through and like to commend Vicki and her team.
Yep, and I go to a lot of places that aren't very ready, and it's a lot more stressful for them and us, so I really appreciate that they're always ready to go and have what we need.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Moving on to the Bulldog Spotlight.
So we're fueling the spotlight up again. We've only had students in for a few weeks, but Mrs. McFarland has helped us pull together a couple of spotlights from middle school and high school.
Yep, so first up are gonna be some of our middle school representatives. One of them couldn't make it, so we have Maya and Maddie.
Come on up, girls.
Mr. Mertz is gonna back 'em up.
No need to be nervous, girls. You're amongst friends.
Good evening. My name is Maddie Siemens, and this is Mia Kitko, and we are from the eighth-grade leadership team. We have been presented the task to talk about the first year of sixth-grade orientation on behalf of the adults and leaders who made it such a success.
With this new experience in putting on the first year of sixth-grade orientation, we think some things went well and some things can be improved for next year. So today, we're gonna be talking to you about the pros and cons of sixth-grade orientation.
Starting off strong, I think that all the incoming sixth graders were really excited to be there, and it took each one of them a step outside their comfort zone with meeting new people and getting to experience new things. We got to build friendships so that they could be comfortable with not only each other but us as their leaders. I think it was good how us as eighth graders put it on and led the groups instead of adults. We have been in their shoes before and have learned many things to share with them. I love being able to see them in the hallways thriving because they are comfortable. I think this has had a really positive impact on each of them individually and made them more comfortable with starting a new chapter in their education.
My personal sixth-grade orientation experience was great. I got to meet new kids and potential friends. My upcoming sixth graders were super excited and ready for middle school. I worked with the kids, showed them around, explaining everything to them and getting them comfortable with the RMS environment. While working with my upcoming sixth graders, I got to know them and their personalities.
To start off, we were assigned a group of 25 to 30 kids each. We got to show them around the school with a tour, assign them their locker combinations, get their picture taken, and most importantly, they received their schedule. It was so cool to be someone who could answer any of their questions and build special bonds with them, even though we were only with them for a few short hours.
Another thing that I think went well is because Leadership A is made of students and not adults, we got them a little more comfortable than if it were adults taking them around. They know we've been in their shoes before, coming to a new environment and being at a new school. We got to share our point of view on things of being a student at RMS. And for example, one student asked me questions about certain teachers and activities we get to do through the school year, so I gave my honest opinions and point of view to the upcoming sixth grader. With this relatable experience, we got to connect better with these students.
While events come with so many good things, there can also be things that can be used to improve for a much better experience in the future. One thing that I think us as leaders and adults all noticed was the use of time management. The stations had a timeframe for us to complete them, but they were often rushed, and there was a lack of communication from the adults. The picture line took up a lot of our time, which led us to not be able to fully complete other necessary tasks. This is all very understandable with it being our first year, and it was still very successful.
Furthermore, with us being assigned stations, we had a timeframe to do them. With this being our first year, I think that a lot of stations were rushed, and there was a lack of communication from the adults. For example, the picture lines. The lines were very long and took up most of the time on our schedule, leaving us with little time to do the rest of activities on the list. Therefore, if we had less time or a longer timeframe, we could have gotten everything done in the right amount of time. Another thing that I think could have been improved is organization of the picture lines. People were cutting in and out, making the lines longer and making us wait longer than before. So that is the end of our sixth-grade orientation presentation. If you have any questions, please let us know, and thank you for your time.
Hey, girls. Got a couple of questions. Come on. I will defer. Board members, any questions for the group?
No questions, but very impressed by your maturity. And you have a proud principal over there and parents, I can see, so good job.
I would like to know if you have come up with a plan to solve these problems yet? Are you working on it?
They're really good delegators. I'm gonna guess you maybe delegated that to Mr. Mertz.
Yeah, we're not gonna have a picture crash or a camera crash in us during the time. We went down to one camera for the time period. So hopefully, we'll have better technology and not a camera crashing to the picture line, because that truly was our biggest holdup. It's the girls' problem.
Great job.
So there was definitely some strategic elements to this in addition to kids, leading kids around. And you can see from some of the pictures that it wasn't just all business. They played some games and cooperative games. And one of the things that I think I have heard is probably the most helpful out of this is the incoming sixth graders got to see where their our-time advisory classroom was. So they knew where they had to go first thing on the first day of school, and that can be a tremendous amount of angst. In between locker combinations and where do I go to start the day, those are probably the two most, you know, nerve-wracking, anxiety-ridden things. So I appreciate the fact that when the kids plan this out, they intentionally plan to, you know, just help reduce that nervousness of starting at the middle school. Girls, I'm curious what you think was like the most enjoyable thing for the sixth graders in the whole day? Because as we look to streamline this, maybe a couple of those things that were truly enjoyable for kids, we want to make sure we leave in. So what'd they find the most fun? We know it wasn't the picture line.
I probably would think that them, like, getting their schedule and their locker and just having students who were in their shoes before really helped them relate and get different, like, advice and things like that.
Great.
I think that taking them, like, through a tour around the school really got them comfortable, and I kind of explained to them, like, what to do in each room and how it all works. I think that got them a little more comfortable with, you know, the RMS environment and getting them, like, excited for middle school.
All right. Last thing, I think we should take a picture of this, because someday, someone's gonna say, "Oh, really? You presented at a school board meeting?" And I want to make sure you have an artifact of that. So Mrs. Bonnick, would you join me?
Why don't we have them stand by the microphone? Can we go that way? A little more real life. So my next pair, Brooklyn Meisner, is the president of the class of 2025, and I didn't know Phillip was joining her. So we have two of our high school kids to talk about the last two weeks at the high school.
Hi, I'm Brooklyn, and this is Phillip.
And we're here just to touch on a little bit about Watchdog Week, Homecoming Week, and all of the just great spirit activities we have early in the year at Romeo and how, in general, the student body feels about it and just how they went this year.
So this year was a bit of a challenge, because we started school after Labor Day, and our Watchdog and Homecoming Games were back-to-back. So it was a lot of planning, a lot of stuff. We're not super, like, we don't collaborate a lot with Watchdog as student council. We hung out a lot of posters. We were just trying to create awareness, because it was like the second week of school, so we wanted to make sure everyone was aware that it was coming up. But Homecoming Week, we were kind of worried about participation just because of how Watchdog just happened, so it's a lot for students to be like, "Oh, this is happening, this is happening, this is happening." But we were really, really happy with the participation and how it turned out. Compared to the other years, we had a lot of people participating in spirit days at the football game, helping set up for homecoming, like, the decorations and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, as Brooklyn touched on, Homecoming and Watchdog Week were kind of really early this year. They were in September. We normally see, like, Homecoming around October, I'd say. And we were a little bit worried about that. There was a lot to plan, a lot of things to do, a lot of time and effort goes into setting up those events. And as Brooklyn has mentioned, we are just really excited and grateful for the turnout we had. We did a couple of changes throughout the process as, for one, we got rid of homecoming floats. I know that was kind of a longstanding tradition, but there has been an ongoing lack of participation in that, and there have been some environmental concerns with just the wastefulness that comes along with the floats. We did away with them this year, and there wasn't too much of a difference. The parade went on normally. Students still enjoyed the event, and everything went accordingly to plan. I know for Homecoming in particular, we had a little bit of a unique theme. This year's theme was Ancient Greece, and I feel, as I could say positively, the student body really enjoyed that change in the theme. I know we personally got a lot of positive feedback, and students really like to see a new, unique theme, and that just tied into the Homecoming dance, the game. And just throughout the week, we were glad to see participation and just another great year at Romeo.
And to add on to the floats, even though we didn't do the floats anymore where the classes would come together, like, individually, so juniors, seniors, sophomores, freshmen, instead of, like, decorating a float, I saw a lot of classes coming together and walking their float decorated as the theme.
Yep.
So let's say the theme was Wizard of Oz next year. Like, someone would be dressed up, like, let's say freshman class was Dorothy. Like, everyone would be dressed up as Dorothy or blue or something. So it does bring in people involved more, not just making it, but you can see classes come together and walking with their float.
Yep. Instead of a float driving down Romeo, we did banners this year. So class representatives or just anyone in the class could walk down holding the banner. And that in general, it gives more student involvement. It gives a face, I'd say, a little bit to the class. And in general, I would say students liked it more. The floats are always fun to do, and it's sad to see a tradition go away. However, the change didn't really affect much stuff, I'd say, and it just improved. Yeah, it was a positive change, and it just improved stuff going on. I know we're not that involved in Watchdog in particular, but I'm glad to say, after the 15 years of Watchdog, this year, I know it was about a little more than $30,000 raised. And over the 15 years of Watchdog at Romeo, I think over $850,000 have been raised.
I think that was a big number this year. I remember Mr. Ryan has mentioned it during the pep assembly, so that was a big milestone for them.
It's really great, and I'm personally involved at a lot through the high school, and I love just being able to tie everything together, put stuff in, and just make sure that these accomplishments are recognized and that the good that's being done that these accomplishments are recognized and that the good that's being done in the community can continue to go on.
All right. And I think that's about all we had. You guys have any questions or any comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm a huge football fan. You all know that. One of the things that I don't like about football is the football schedule dictates things like this. So that's always a challenge, you know, is waiting for that schedule and we get it sometime in the late winter, early spring, and then you're trying to place things. And so we have, we've kind of learned in the past when we wait until late October, sometimes Mother Nature has a little bit more control over Homecoming than, than we would like. So a tremendous lift for student leaders like this in really what is the first two and a half weeks of school to put together these two events. And I know some of you had the opportunity to attend. I would argue the Watchdog Game was the largest crowd I've seen at Barnabau in my time here, and we had close to that. You know, part of it we don't control because the team that comes to play us, how they travel and how many people they bring. So certainly playing Eisenhower in the Watchdog Game brought a larger crowd than this past Friday night. And then the last thing I would say is it's always good to win your Homecoming Game.
Yes.
So we're grateful to see that victory last Friday night for the Bulldogs. And the happiest person is Mr. Smith, our Athletic Director, because when he looks at October now, it's, it's, the biggest lifts for him are, are behind him. So congratulations again to the high school. Heard a lot of good compliments about how the kids conducted themselves. The, the assemblies were, you know, well-attended and, and very productive and things went off well with the dance on Saturday, so. So I'm going to lead this last Bulldog Spotlight, and I know we've had some conversation about, about adding a position in another, another level of safety and security strategies. So it's my pleasure to just take a moment tonight and introduce to the board and really the public, Mr. Mike Thomas, who is our new Director of Safety and Security. So welcome, Mike, and thanks for coming out tonight. As the board knows, we've expanded our contract with Secure Environment Consultants and specifically the S.H.I.E.L.D. Division. So we're still working our way out of using the word Safe Ed because for two years, we knew Safe Ed, we knew yellow shirts, and we knew what that meant, especially at our secondary buildings. So SEC acquired Safe Ed last March and their School Security Division is, is known as S.H.I.E.L.D. And so we've, with the support of the board, we've expanded our contract with S.H.I.E.L.D. to add a Director of Safety and Security, and Mike's been on the job for a couple of weeks. So Mike, share a thought or two about your first couple of weeks here in Romeo.
Well, Dr. Robson, the first thing I'm going to share is I think you set me up for failure here in making me follow all those professional students that just talk. I can't even begin to compare to that. But yeah, I'm on my third week. Very excited to be here, and I want to thank the board for approving this position because it wouldn't happen without all of you. I did raise my boys right up the road in Almont. I've known this Romeo community for a long, long time. I've always known its reputation and I've always known its standards, and I'm just honored to be a part of that and try to hold to that standard, make small improvements where we can. But make no mistake about it, I know what a professional group we have here. Not surprised that the budget review was the way it was or that these kids presented the way they did. It's just what this school is. It's what this district is.
All right. Well, you get the row of handshakes because that's a tradition for new people. A photo and we'll get you onto the rest of your day.
Which way do I start?
Why don't you start over here?
Start over here.
That's our spotlight for tonight.
All right, moving on to consent action. Can I have a motion?
Motion, support.
Moved by ICORS, supported by Dr. Demas. This section includes our general fund bills, the approval of our financial reports, approval of the wire transfer report, approval of purchasing card expenditures, and the minutes from the regular meeting on August 26. Are there any questions or concerns, comments? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to informational updates and new business. We don't have-
So I don't have any communications, Mrs. Bonnet, and we've got a couple of committee reports.
Yes. Facilities, Mike, were you done it?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the facilities committee report, we held a committee of the whole for that in which the entire board was invited to attend, and that was on September the 9th. And there were two main topics that we talked about. We talked about our current bond, our 2021 bond, and we got a summary of where we were financially with that. And we talked about some funding use out of that bond, which there is a resolution today for elementary furniture. It's ancillary-
Ancillary.
Ancillary, I'm sorry. Ancillary furniture for the main office spaces and outdoor classrooms, reception areas, speech and language, social workers, conference rooms, all for Mandamore, Hamilton Parsons, and Indian Hills. So we have a resolution to approve that this evening. And we also have two other resolution, or we had a topic that we went in more depth. We were presented by administration and we talked about some bond projects that were deferred because of the cost increases, where we are with our facilities planning, and we talked about, about when would be a good time to work with our administration and community to support a bond that would cover these deferred projects and some other things that may be accomplished. So a lot, a great deal of time was spent in that. All the board was informed on pros and cons, advantages, disadvantages, timelines, financial status, where we're at with our finances as a district. And so we have two resolutions tonight pertaining to that, and one of them is to move forward with the bond planning agreement with Barton Mallow and doing some studies and seeing where we're at, which some of that has already been completed for us and where we want to go. And a resolution to move forward, to give the district permission to move forward for a, a bond in, in the upcoming months here. So that's it.
Thank you. And finance?
Finance. So the bulk of the finance notes that you all received had to do with the audit, which, thank you Jessica for presenting that tonight and Vicky for all your hard work that you put into that. So I won't repeat what she already mentioned, but we also talked about the sales of the second series of bonds, and there will be a resolution tonight, but that was really explored in depth. Yep, she's going to talk about it in the superintendent, superintendent report, and it was also explored at our facilities meeting. And then the proposed facility bond, again at the Facility Committee of the Whole, which I think most of you were able to be at, we looked at that and we are also going to be exploring that more in depth at the October workshop. And then the last thing on the notes was the typographical error that went out for the summer tax levy that had to be reconciled, which will show up on the winter tax bill. So that has been approved. So that's just a, an FYI for the board.
Thank you. And then we have two upcoming meetings listed there. The Safety Subcommittee is October 7th and Facilities will meet again on October 21st. Superintendent's Report?
We'll start with Academic Services.
Good evening. Just have a few things from the elementary level to share with you tonight. Our beginning of year testing has concluded. It started, started about a week earlier this year to be able to get access to data to provide support sooner, and things seem to go really smooth. At the elementary level, again, we're done with NWA, so now our charge is to look at the data, both teachers, administrators, our interventionists, reading specialists, and decide what plans need to be made to support students who, who need the sports. We have a few, second bullet, a few new programs to highlight this year around ELA. The first is M-Class. M-Class is a DIBELS-based diagnostic. So students who score below a certain threshold in NWA get the DIBELS diagnostic, and then our reading interventionists and reading support staff enter that information into the M-Class platform. The platform then takes that information and develops a plan, a tailor-made, you know, plan, individual plan, but also clusters kids based on skill deficit. Really creates some efficiency for our human resources, right? They don't have to do that work, and so it just eases the access, you know, from a time perspective and allows them to, to start their groups earlier and hopefully provide, again, some more support. Our second tool that I want to highlight is both an intervention tool, a gap filler if you will, but also an acceleration tool as well. We've had iXL Math in Romeo for a long time and it's shown to, to work well with students, both those who may be struggling in math, but also those who need, you know, kind of that accelerated path. It's, it's definitely, you know, unique and independent-based. Kids make a, a trip to the arena frequently where they basically can kind of run like a mini diagnostic and their plan gets retailored for them. We have that now for ELA. I think it was a couple of years ago. It may have been last year. Rachel, you may have asked me about, do we have something for ELA? Well, this is what we have for ELA now. And so we're really working through the nuts and bolts. Our principals put on some outstanding PD before school started to kind of coach our teachers up on how that looks, you know, when it can fit within the school day and the best way to attack understanding what kids are doing and, and provide, you know, whatever necessary supports they may need to, to be consistent with the program and give it their all. And so we're really excited to roll these two programs out this year. M-Class was piloted at Mandamore in Washington last year, and we saw some pretty good results, so much so that our reading specialist group wanted it for all five buildings, so we were fortunate enough to be able to bring that. Training's been done. DIBELS diagnostic testing is going on right now, and then it's time to roll the balls out and see what happens. So we're excited to see the progress that we think that this will bring. And then the last bullet I have was kind of covered in your packet tonight. You have a resolution for Phase 5 of our elementary furniture project. Impacts all of our elementary schools, minimally in the office. All of our ancillary staff spaces that needed it will get furniture. We have some unique niche spaces at Indian Hills that are going to get furniture too, and then outdoor classrooms that are, are ready will get some furniture too if approved tonight. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them now.
I just had a question about the testing. Do you feel like you have enough support as far as staffing to get that done in a timely manner? And are teachers given substitutes if they're, if they're having to do any testing themselves?
Yeah, so the, like, NWA testing is done by the classroom teacher, right? And so every teacher is doing it. It's just, you know, an expected process of the fall, winter, and spring. And so, no, subs aren't, aren't, aren't given for that. And then we just have a subset of students who will run through the DIBELS diagnostic testing, and our reading intervention staff handles that. I think we bought 150 licenses for each building, and so, yes, it's a bear, but you know, when you look at the efficiency in terms of having to then look at the data and, and group students, you know, based on ability or skill deficit, you know, our software is doing that for us. So hopefully it's like a, a net gain for us. You know, one of the things that we did tackle with the adoption of new ELA curriculum last year was sunsetting DRA. DRA was a massive, massive lift for our, our Janet teachers, and so taking that off their plate, I think, was, was important. We're also going to be looking at, you know, all of the assessments that are given with CKLA to see if there's any space for us to free up, you know, just kind of maybe reduce back some of the assessments. We're not used to assessments in ELA because we haven't had them for like 20 years. And so we want to, you know, be strategic in what we do there, but if we can take some of that off the plate, that will allow for more instructional space for teachers too.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Jennifer's going to talk about the K-12 math review too, which elementary obviously is a part of.
No, I'm ignoring.
Surprised you didn't take that one, Murray. So NWA testing is wrapping up this week at our middle school. High school and middle school started testing at the same time as elementary, but we had quite a few new middle school children without Chromebooks, so they were waiting for some delivery. So their testing will finish up this week. Professional development, Rob mentioned earlier. It was, we had the two days in August and a half day at beginning of September. It was great. You know, the high school, they got back to teachers doing mini sessions and teachers choosing what they wanted to attend. This was all based on feedback and, and the teacher leadership along with the high school administration choosing, you know, kind of what, what topics needed to be presented based on the staff need. And they're doing the same thing on Wednesday, the Wednesday apparently instead of this Wednesday, but Wednesday we have PD as well. High school's doing the same type of thing. The middle school for two days, we had Capturing Kids' Hearts. Day one, it was in the Romeo Middle School Media Center. Day two, it was here at 6:00 AM when we didn't have power on that second PD day. The middle school staff, secretaries, the custodians here, they reimagined and set this up to have Capturing Kids' Hearts. So really pulled the team together and it was great to see, and they were able to complete that, that two-day training, which then, you know, carried over into the first day with kids, and it was just really great. And again, it's this Wednesday, September 25th, we have another full day of PD. So we're excited to have teachers present at both high school and middle school around topics and just give them time to continue to learn together. As Rob mentioned on his way out, we started our K-12 math review. So we had, let me say, like 37 people in the second floor boardroom at the admin building. Very lively group, passionate about mathematics. And so they, they, we started visioning and what we value in math and math instruction. So we'll have another small segment, small group of, of those teachers in early October, creating some look-fours, and then in November we'll bring forward some companies that produce math curriculum to, to vet some out to see what we might pilot.
A couple ISD consultants?
Yes, so, yes. Both the secondary math consultant and one of the elementary math consultants, Scott and Nick, were there and facilitated the, the visioning and the value work and things with us. And they're along for the ride now. They did the heavy lifting, and so we appreciate their help and support. Any questions?
What was the teacher's response to Capturing Kids' Hearts? Was it great?
It was awesome.
Yeah.
They, like, I would have thought, like, having to come over here, you know, because of the second day, they were all in. Like, it was, and just to see the way they're talking to kids. And I know Mr. Marsh fills me in every day about, you know, the staff that are outside their door. They know their kids' names already. Like, it just, it accelerated. And remember that focus of culture and our transformation. It's, it's so cool to see. And there's a video that the staff will see on Wednesday at the middle school that kids made about creating a welcoming environment.
Awesome.
And I got a sneak peek of it, and it's just so awesome. Like, my heart. But yeah, it was great. Thank you for asking.
So it, having bounced back and forth from Hamilton Parsons to the middle school or, or here on the second day and kind of see the sequence of the training, you know, one group and another, first of all, I would say, the two facilitators we had were amazing. And our interaction with one of the vice presidents of the company who ran the Michigan flagship training, I get worried sometimes because it's like people who are really dynamic, really invested, and really connected. Sometimes their worst enemy is they can't copy and paste themselves. And so he assured me that our trainers are all vetted, you know, trained, and they have, and, and I would tell you uniquely, each of those two people were incredible and I believe uniquely matched to the administration of the building that they actually trained at. And, you know, we talk about this work being about capturing kids' hearts. We captured some adult hearts in those two days, which is, which is always good. So excited to see this play out. We have a training Jennifer referenced Wednesday called Culture Builders, and so this is for support staff to, that don't necessarily need the full two days, but they, they work with kids in these buildings or in other parts of the school day, and it gives them context of what the work is and, and enough practical skills to come alongside. So our bus drivers will be a part of that training, food service staff from the buildings that are implementing, paraprofessionals, some clerical staff, some people that don't report to work. You know, when we did the August days, I think we have 66? 60 additional staff that will get that three-hour training Wednesday morning. So we're excited about that. Okay, Vicky, not necessarily as exciting as that is the sale of bonds, but as a result of, I think, our last finance meeting, a couple of the board members said, you know, Vicky, like, this is a little bit more dicey for us to do in the committee report. Would you please come and, and share this information as a part of the board meeting? So here's Vicky to talk about the sale of the, of the future series of our 21 bond.
Okay, so when the voters approved the 87.5 million bond in 2021, we intended to sell that in two series, and we sold the first series for $60 million, and the intent was to sell 27.5 million dollars as a second series. Upon recommendation with our financial advisor, they suggested that we split the second series into a second and third series of bonds. So the second series is what is before you tonight to approve to sell. The three types of, there's three types of methods to sell those bonds. There's a competitive, a negotiated sale, or a direct placement. Our financial advisor's recommended that we use a negotiated sale, and that's primarily because the volatility in the market right now, and we need some flexibility with how we structure these bonds. The underwriter is pre-selected, so we've, we've selected Stiefel Nicholas, which is a underwriter that is used throughout the education community. The underwriter will offer the bonds for sale to investors. They may even have some local investors that may want to buy some of the bonds. The pricing date, bond size, and the maturity amounts are flexible, so that's one of the advantages of selling this in a separate series. And then we come, and we, it's commonly used in volatile markets. So between now and October, the markets could change, and that we'll have the flexibility to move to maybe a different date if we decide that the market's not right for us. And if we did it on a competitive sale, we would be set and we'd be stuck with the date. And, you know, due, due to the election coming up, we feel like the markets might be a little more volatile than they normally would. So if you look at the bottom, it shows in the pink, the second, the second series, fall of 2024, is $15 million, so we're going to sell that at $15 million for 23, 5.5 months, 23 years to 5.5 months. And then the, the third series will be sold in the spring of 2025. So that will be coming up next spring, and that's 12.5 million. Both of those are assuming that we're going to have a 3% taxable value growth rate and that we will have an estimated interest rate of 5%. So those are both guesses, but they're educated guesses on what we, what we'll do. And then I think the next slide, and this is kind of the timeline, so you're going to be approving tonight the second series sale, and then this week we'll have a conference call with the rating agency that will give us a rating for our bonds. We'll do pricing on October 16th, and then the closing will be in November, so we'll have the proceeds then.
Questions for Vicky? All right.
Okay.
Thank you. So construction and facilities, maybe bond combined. Just an update for the board and the community who's either here tonight or may watch on-demand afterwards. So looking in on our Group 2 work, we're excited that we're in a window of time, probably within the next five to six months here. probably within the next five to six months here of completing a series of our Group Two projects. Croswell is actually a Group One project, but we don't talk Group One anymore because Croswell has just lived across two groups. And there are some elements of the renovation and new addition there that are truly part of Group Two. So the new addition, the early childhood renovation, the early childhood special ed, the overwhelming portion of the upgrades and new instructional space for three and four-year-olds is completed and in use. The new playground, which is super exciting, is, is very close. When you're working with early childhood education, we have a separate governing organization, LARA, which is a state organization, and they have a whole nother series of inspections in addition to just our normal building and construction inspections. So we've got some work to do to finalize that playground and hopefully have that up and going here in early October for, for our kids to use. The Indian Hills addition, we're down to just working through a final punch list, but that's in place. And that's super neat. That turned out great, a very difficult site for us to do construction on. You know, I, I really like the fact sometimes when we don't have a ton of rain, and we had a ton of rain this summer, that held some of these projects up a little bit. And then the minute you plant seed and you want to grow grass, it doesn't rain for three weeks. So, so we're kind of dealing with that in some of the site restoration at Indian Hills in terms of just getting the, the full site. We went ahead and put a new play pad in for their playground just because the, the construction road in that, we felt like it was good to, to get the heavy equipment in to do that so that they could go and take the construction road out and restore that site. Amanda Moore is making good progress. That's a three specialty classroom addition, almost identical to Hamilton Parsons. And we're hoping to follow that wonderful timeline like we did at Hampar to be done. Maybe as soon as November, but certainly before the end of the calendar year. Our classroom, STEM classroom addition at Washington. We got held up, slowed up a little bit there because of some re-engineering that needed to be done to tie the new addition into the existing roof, roof line and corridor. So we're moving forward. Sometimes it's a little confusing when you see, well, the three classroom addition is in front of the one classroom addition. But site conditions and things like tying into the existing facility sometimes just slow things up. So probably a similar timeline for Washington, but we potentially thought that would be done a little sooner just because it was just a single room. They both should be turned over to the district and, and providing instruction to elementary students there before the end of the calendar year. If you haven't been behind Romeo Middle School and you got a few minutes when you're driving on 32 Mile, I would encourage anyone to just loop behind. See a significant portion of the redesign of the north parking lot and the site. And you can certainly see the new STEM and robotics center that's connected on the, the northwest corner of the building. So pretty close to closing that in and the interior work. The good thing about a STEM and robotics center is it doesn't have a lot of fancy finishes on the inside of it. So the inside work of that should go a little quicker. We're super hopeful that we'll get that cleared, completed and turned over to the district in time for the high school robotics season that begins in January. And then I don't have on the slide, but I should if, if this time of year, we've got a lot of people coming out to football games and tennis matches and that and probably seen some aerial photos of the new baseball and softball fields. So we're still plugging away at those. We're down to a lot of the intricate work around the dugouts and the backstop and the netting and things like that. But those, those should finish up here in the fall. There's a few elements of those projects that we might wait until post-winter to complete just because one less Michigan winner on some of that might make sense. So we were hopeful maybe to have those to the point where we could at least allow people to walk them at one of these big football games. But with them both being in September, that just wasn't, we weren't able to land that. And then last, we continue to work on the middle school site work, which is the outdoor athletic facility. That if you take that loop around the back of the middle school, you're going to begin to see how what used to be a site that had kind of some uphill and downhill areas, that's just kind of been generally graded out. And they're working on installing the middle school track and some of the other site needs, drainage and things like that. So we're hopeful to be able to see the track completed potentially for this upcoming spring season. But that field, the grass field and that and things like that are just going to take arguably maybe a hold through a whole nother fall to make sure that, that that is established. That's a natural, you know, grass field. So going to take a little longer for, to make sure that that's durable once we begin to practice and play on it. Group Three is in design. There's a, the most significant project is the classroom renovation and some redesign here at the Ninth Grade Academy. So we come in for meetings like this and we see the, the media center that was done, you know, in the 2016 bond. But all the classrooms here are the, this is the last building that hasn't had a classroom renovation. Some exciting design going on to build some new biology labs because when this building was built for middle school, that's a general science class and, and biology takes a different instructional space. Locker room renovation here. One of the things I would highlight in that design is we did some preparatory work for the baseball and softball fields to potentially have an outbuilding for concession and restrooms. And we were able to create a redesign on the east side of this building in the locker room area that they will actually be built right into the building. So saving us probably a significant amount of money in a future bond, but also utilizing space here to meet the needs for some storage for our outdoor teams, restrooms from the outside of the building and, and small concession type area all on the east side of this building. Then looking ahead, middle school locker rooms, we're going to do those the same time we're doing the locker rooms here. We've had a little bit of shift in our Group Three and Group Four planning at the elementary level. And over the course of the last month and a half, due to some inspections that we had, the elementary principals are choosing to consolidate the remaining 21 bond funds and put them all towards playground redesign and re-equipping. So we're still working through how that's going to play out. But in the next month or so, I think we'll have some solid plans for that. We've got some other work with heating and cooling equipment replacement and a few parking lots that are designed for the summer of '25. So we'll design and begin to approve with the board November, December and January. And then that, these Group Three projects will be primarily starting, they'll be starting next summer. Many of them will take longer than, than just the summer months. So for the board specifically, we'll move our meeting somewhere beginning next summer for probably three or four months because of the construction that'll be going on here in this building. Once we get sorted out this elementary playground portion, we'll update the construction timeline to, to match that, get that on the website and make sure that we publicize that. We talked a little bit about the future bond planning conversation. So we dipped our toe into this actually a year ago, October. And just, just want to, you know, kind of remind the board, but also maybe more specifically to, to the community, parents here and community members. You know, we get a presentation tonight from our auditor, which is super important and helpful. We also have a financial advisor that works with us really day to day. And so PFM is constantly interacting with, with Vicki and myself in the finance subcommittee to just talk about the perspective of, of our bond, our debt retirement, our sinking fund and things like that. And so that really is where this starts from is when your financial advisor begins to, to tell you the scenario that could present itself. More specifically with the fact that our 2021 bond dollars have not gone as far as, as we originally planned in that application. So as we step further into this tonight, we're looking at formally approving a planning agreement with Barton Mallow. This is something that, that the district has done in, in the previous bonds. And it's really important to have the expertise and help of a construction management company through this process. I think the biggest thing that we've begun to do when we kind of reauthorized the bond last spring is we're thinking through kind of three categories. We refer to them at the facilities meeting as kind of three buckets that we would put potential projects in. The first of those buckets is the deferred projects from the 2021 bond. And that's a combination of construction projects and technology enhancements. And so when we had to roll back on some of the construction efforts and decrease some of the technology projects we were planning to do to stay within the available dollars for the remainder of this bond, that's sitting right now in a place of just under $10 million. And we're probably going to track that to at least 11 and maybe even closer to 13 million before the 2021 bond is done. So that has something at every building that we can't, that we're not going to have the dollars. And so last spring, the board deferred a series of projects initially for a future revenue source. And that's why we're having this conversation, is that if, if the scenario is there within, within our district to consider going out and asking the voters to extend or renew the current facilities bond, certainly at no increase. The first bucket we would be looking at or category would be deferred projects. We also have about $17 million of priority projects in our, from our facilities assessment that the sinking fund just could not keep up with. So to, to consider how we could put those on a more expedited timeline so that we're dealing with things that are very outdated, but we're not completing those things. And then the original things we fixed are now needing updating as well. And then last, due to enrollment and, and just living in spaces and changes in the demographic and our student body, we actually have some new needs and wants and we'll work through that. So our next opportunity to dig into that is the October 14th study session. We're working with building level teams right now to just kind of vet out and talk about what might actually fall into that third category of needs and wants. And we'll follow through with doing some interaction, of course, with, with our parent group and community group. And then if in fact we decide to formally, you know, put into action that 2025 bond, then we're going to start talking about focus groups and things like that to help us specifically get information we need for any kind of campaign. So typically in the September board meeting, I take a few minutes to, as a part of my report, to give kind of a safety update. And certainly, you know, last week had some safety challenges for us as a district. There's been some safety challenges, quite honestly, across schools, across the state and the country. Having had the opportunity to spend a couple of days at the Stu, State Superintendent's Conference, I could tell you that, you know, unfortunately, we're not alone. And there are some districts that are dealing with things, unfortunately, way more intrusive and disruptive than, than what we had to deal with. But I'm not going to shy away from my safety update. And this will begin with annual parent communication that will go out this week. And that really has been structured so that there's a lot of information there for parents. So it's, it's how much do you want to engage with? If just the general email message is enough, that's fine. But you're going to also have the ability to review our standard response protocols again and a comprehensive list of district safety measures that have been put in place really over the last three or four years. We'll highlight recent additions and updates and I'll do a little bit of a teaser for that tonight. So we're settled into the school year now. We're certainly into the required drills in some cases that we need to. And we want to make sure that we're talking about the things that we have in place. You know, when I, we talk about additions, we introduced you to Mr. Thomas today. I think that's one of the most significant additions we'll have is someone that's just going to be dedicated not only to working with our shield security staff in our secondary buildings, but also tending to safety and security on a daily basis. Where when not having a dedicated person like that, it gets done, but doesn't get done necessarily maybe with the same efficiency. So just a minute to go back on what were our 23, 24 district school safety focus areas. The first of those was to re-engage with emergency response coordination. So last year, we re-engaged the agencies, law enforcement, fire and EMT that serve our district. We got representatives in the room and we began a cadence of every other district, every other month with our district safety team meeting, we bring those representatives in. The probably primary outcome from that was in kind of two areas. We talked about facility awareness and familiarity. So on some of our breaks from school, Officer Bauer and Deputy Labish were running kind of open houses for police and fire staff to come and tour the buildings and get their eyes on the inside so they have some awareness in the event of an emergency. Also presence at some of our drills, getting more familiar with our building leaders and things like that so that in an event of an emergency, there's some familiarity with our staff in addition to our facilities. We had a focus of systematic training, a plan for our active violence emergency, and, and that's up and running now. We have three district trainers and we're, we've got a plan to get Mr. Thomas trained in the next couple of months here so we can run those at a regularity. We are on the three-year retraining of all staff. So all of our staff will go through the full training. This year, we started that in the August PD days. We'll continue it this week and finish in November. We had a focus area of finally after three and a half years, getting in place a district-wide emergency communication system. Cell phone reception and connectivity on any given day is, is a little bit edgy in some of our buildings. But it's also a little bit difficult across the geography of our, of our district. So we now have in place a two-way ra, a two-way radio system that provides in-building radios for a number of staff to communicate in that building. But we have, I think it's 31 now, district-level administrative radios that we have a secure frequency that we can switch to in the event of an emergency to be able to communicate district-wide. This system also integrates with the bus radios. So bus dispatch and our building principals have the ability to interact with a bus if there's a breakdown or someone's on the wrong bus and things like that. Finally, from the past year, we had a focus area of, of our visitor management system and making that district-wide. And now the Raptor system is in place at all of our school buildings. We had some safety threat assessments done by SEC back in 2022. And we are about 92% through the recommendations of that. There's a handful of recommendations that we've just set aside because they just don't make sense for the procedure of our building. And SEC knows that and allows you the autonomy to decide. But we're grateful that we've been able to go through and, and I know the safety subcommittee has seen that list and, and will track, continue to track that through them. We took advantage of a state grant around critical incident mapping. Mr. Storm has spent a lot of time with this company and on the ground in our buildings. And our maps have finally been approved on our end and are in final production with CRG, the company that helped us with that. And then the last thing for our update today is in, at the July 29th safety subcommittee meeting, presented some draft focus areas for this year. And this, a week ago Friday, our district safety team finalized these. So we've got three primary focus areas. We, we work in any area in safety that we have to. But this is some proactive areas that we believe are important for our group to focus on this year. We want to continue the work with our emergency response agency. We set some priorities for them in January of, of last year. So those are kind of running on the calendar year. And we categorize those as communication, facility awareness, I talked about, and coordinated training. On June 14th, we actually had a tabletop exercise in this room with about, almost 50. On June 14th, we actually had a tabletop exercise in this room with about almost 50 people that included district administration and clerical staff and police and fire reps in addition to county dispatch. So we took a lot of notes, learned a lot from that two and a half hour tabletop, and we'll be working through. We began the conversation with our emergency response team reps at, at the meeting in September, and we'll conclude a summary of those outcomes and begin to work to, to make our processes clearer within the district and, and in the event of emergency. Still working through finalizing relocation and reunification. Actually, Jennifer, Rob, Vicki, and myself attended a training in Richmond on our standard reunification model, and that allows us to now be trainers for our internal training. So we're moving forward with that. We have revisited our relocation sites and need to finalize our processes for when students and staff and parents come to those sites. They change time for ti- time, time to time, and we have a good plan in place, but we just want to make sure we're best utilizing that facility. And then I'm pleased to share, Mrs. Marshall and I worked together on a transportation handbook for reunification, and our bus drivers spent a couple hours in August actually visiting each of the evacuation sites and reunification sites and rode a bus together to, to visualize the ru- the safe, the best routes to get schools to that site and where students would be dropped. So the policy committee knows that there are some changes in legislation from June by the state legislature around cardiac response, and that's, those have set forth some policy and regulation changes that need to be in place by next school year. So our team is going to work with our school nurse and, and others to make sure that we take care of what we need to, to make sure we're aligned and our cardiac response is, is as sound as it can be. And then finally, the county superintendent's group just approved an update to the county emergency operations plan template, primarily reorganization, but also including some new sections around things like behavioral threat assessment that the county has invested a lot in. So we're going to take some time this fall to get ready to transition to the new EOP, and by law, the board will have to approve that update after we get coordination with law enforcement to, to approve the work that we've done. So that's what we're focusing on this year. I would be remiss to not just simply say, you know, anytime we go through a scenario like we went through last week at the middle school, you know, we learn, and, and so we're doing some debriefing both at the building and district level so that, so that we can get better. And specifically to last week, I think we have some things that, that we can clean up in terms of communication, and that will hopefully allow us to stay in front of things because the minute you get behind one of these situations with, you know, social media and just the rumor mill amongst students, it's, it's really hard to get back out in front of it. So, you know, for those that were more directly impacted by that, you know, I apologize because that's the last thing we want to do is stress parents and kids out at any time, but especially in the first couple weeks of the school year and in the first couple weeks after another tragic school shooting in our country. But we will make it right, and we'll own what we need to own, and I want to make it very clear that there was no threat. There was no substantiated threat. And I think one of the things that's very important, and I'll just share this now whether I should or not, is every parent at some point, I think, needs to put themselves in a place where if in fact something was maybe speculated or falsely reported about your 12 or 13-year-old, you would want for an investigation to occur, and you would want the opportunity when there was no threat and there was no harm done, for that student to be rematriculated back into school and be accepted by their peers as quickly as possible. And so that's where we're at right now. So if you're here or you watch this and you have a child at the middle school, you know, we always want you to continue to work with your child about the importance of reporting, but also in those instances where there wasn't a threat, to help get them back to a place where they can feel confident, and most importantly, if they do know who that peer was, that they would help make sure that that person could be welcomed back into school. So I apologize for being a little long-winded tonight, but that is my report.
All right. I did not receive any public comment, so we will move on to our regular meeting action items. Can I have a motion to improve Employee Services Resolution 71, which is the personnel update?
Motion.
Moved by Ms. Ikorst.
Support.
Support by Dr. Demas. Are there any questions or concerns on this one? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is Employee Services Resolution 72, which is our Board of Education policy updates. This is our second reading of Policies 101, 004, 4005, 3005, 3006, and 8009. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Support.
Support.
I, okay.
I got it.
I was supporting too. Yeah, just as the, since I was on the committee, but are there any questions or concerns on this one? Comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Facilities Resolution Number 73, which is our elementary furniture proposal, Phase Five. This was outlined at our facilities committee and outlined tonight as well. Can I have a motion?
Support.
Moved by Dr. Demas, supported by Mr. Antoine. This is coming out of the 2021 bond, just over $316,000. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is Facilities Resolution Number 74, which is the 2025 bond planning agreement. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved, moved by Antoine and supported by Mr. Connor. This is, was outlined at the facilities meeting and touched on this evening as well. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I will be abstaining. So that would be five. Five, yes, one abstention. Business Services Resolution 75, which is the 2021 bond, second series of the school building and site bond sale. Can I have a motion?
Motion. Support.
Moved by Ikorst, supported by Rice. This was outlined by Ms. Lasky tonight, also discussed at our facilities meeting. Any questions or concerns? Comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Business Services Resolution 76, which is our fin- annual financial audit, which was presented this evening. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Ms. Ikorst, supported by Dr. Demas. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I did not receive any other public comment for this evening. All right. Board discussion for the good of the district. Nothing at that end of the table? Anything over here? Welcome back, Mr. Connor. Good to see you. Healthy?
She said welcome back.
All right. I have nothing. We are going to go into closed session for collective bargaining. We do not, do not anticipate any vote when we come out, so you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. Can I have a motion to go into closed session? Moved by Dr. Demas, supported by Mr. Antoine. Can I have roll call?
Mr. Antoine.
Yes.
Ms. Bonick.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Demas.
Yes.
Mrs. Ikorst.
Yes.
I'm a yes, and we're good.